Welcome to the November 13th. It feels like we just met.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Work session. Welcome to everyone. So first up, our committee reports. I'll just go around the table and see what people want to talk about here.
Oh, okay. Actually, we've got the Traveling County Board is meeting with the Board of County Commissioners December 11th. It's just kind of a sit-down and go over some of the things that were discussed during the last RFP process, try to maybe not really change the direction, but to figure out different ways of doing things. And it's just going to be a joint meeting. The LTD EMX Steering Committee meets Tuesday, December 3rd, so I'll have some information on that. They're still doing the public outreach on the next, the build-out phase of the West Eugene EMX route. And the Lane-Metro Partnership meets next Monday afternoon to discuss where they're going to be headed. There's, tentative, there is a plan to take the next six months to reevaluate where we, where the Lane-Metro Partnership is, which direction it wants to go. And we'll be having a board meeting on that to discuss and maybe finalize some plans on that. And so I'll report back on that next, next time we meet, which will be after the first of the year, I think. Can we ask some questions about that?
Yeah, me too.
About the partnership?
Yeah.
So both George and I have been going to those meetings. The partnership as such, both Springfield and Lane County are no longer paying any money to the, to the partnership. And the agreement has been that we're going to work on it and see what the new evolution is, right?
Well, my, my last understanding is that Lane County and the City of Eugene will, and I think it's going to be on a monthly basis, fund the Metro Partnership. John Lively will be taking over as not really an interim director, but as the main point of contact. That's if this gets approved at the board meeting, be the main point of contact until six months, up to six months goes by, and then we'll decide, like I said, whether to reform, reshape, or redo, or do away with the Lane-Metro Partnership. There's nothing definite yet on that, but that's what, they're taking the next six months to kind of take a big look at, at the organization and how it interreacts with the local government jurisdictions and the private sector.
So Allen and then Mike.
What happens if someone makes an inquiry?
I'm sorry?
What happens if someone makes an inquiry?
That's what John would handle that inquiry.
Yeah, if there's a lead that comes in, John Lively will be taking the point. He will, like, again, this is, this is pending approval by the Board of Directors.
Sure, right.
And what will happen is he will step down from his part-time job with the county and work for, as the focal point for the Metro Partnership.
And in the meantime, it's been, I think, Mike Sullivan from our, from the city and Glenda from the county and, no, no.
John Tamelones.
John Tamelones, yeah.
Yeah.
From Springfield.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So I was sorry to see Jack Roberts go. I think that's a loss for the community, but John Lively would do a good job stepping in till you all figure out what's the next.
He was the original director of it when it first formed in 1985, I believe it was.
Mike, you have a question?
My understanding, and perhaps my understanding was wrong, was that Springfield budgeted the money for economic development in the usual amount that they would have paid for partnership in the Metro Partnership, but elected not to continue until such a time as a change or a difference was there. First of all, do I have that right? Second of all, is it their intention, do you know through the communications you've had on the board, for some organization to be reformed that includes all three parties?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So it will.
My understanding is also that they, they budgeted the money, and my understanding is also that they are still willing to participate.
What's the, can you say what is the sticking point hurdle thing that will be important to them in the process of reforming?
I can't at this time. I don't, I really don't know.
I think the only thing that you could fairly say, and I think they've been very, expresses very overtly, is that the Springfield Chamber of Commerce and Springfield lost confidence in the Metro Partnership.
Right. So their level of confidence was in the organization or its leadership at the time?
It is my understanding, and that could change, that they are not interested in anything having to name the Metro Partnership.
There we go. Okay.
They are interested in a future of the.
Regional economic planning in some.
Right. And we're going to figure out what that is.
Ah, good.
And I think.
Everybody.
I think the city manager may have something to add.
Just to add, and I would just echo that. My conversations with Gino, for example, are pretty much mirror what the mayor has with Christine, is there's a commitment by all the agencies and the two chambers to essentially redesign the model going forward for regional economic development. And part of that's in response to what we all hope is sort of a, an evolving economy. There is some interest on several of the parties, or all of the parties, to also have a, perhaps a little more active outreach, a recruiting arm of the, of the model. So that's a piece of that. What everybody has said is we're committed to an independent entity for regional economic development, meaning it doesn't rest with any particular political jurisdiction, and each individual political jurisdiction can also have a strong economic presence.
Well, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and George does a fantastic job on serving on what is still the Metro Partnership, but I think this presents us with an opportunity to say, if we're going to reform some manner of regional economic organization, what would our best outcomes as a Eugene-centric council look like? I think we should have at least a work session on that to, to be talking about in that reforming process, what do we hope to get out of it best.
Absolutely.
Yep. Good idea. Right, yeah. One of, one of the other reasons why they're taking this big look is because economic development is not the same as it was in the eighties or in the nineties. It has changed dramatically. And I will say that in the interim, that John Tamelones, Mike Sullivan, and Glenda have worked hand-in-hand together to, you know, field leads coming in from the state or from wherever. And I think the three of them are doing a great job continuing on with the economic development procedure here in Lane County.
Okay. Greg, we're going around and seeing if anybody has any committees or that they want to report on, or anything that they want to share.
Yeah.
Okay. George?
Thanks, Mayor. The Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission, we, not much, a lot is going on. We keep receiving updates about, you know, working with the state on the new, the new regulations for water temperature that will be allowable, and it's, it's going to take a while to figure all that out. We did present a, you know, approve of a new contract for the manager to enter into with the Hoffer family. It's the family that farms the land around the Palmer plantation on Highway 99. There were some inconsistencies in the old contract and some confusions, and those have all been nailed out. And we understand that the family is happy with the new arrangement, and the wastewater commission is happy with the new arrangement, so. And then there was, we had an executive session and talked about a, a way to solve this, a potential lawsuit with the contractor who provided a piece of equipment and it didn't work right. And so, it's a long story, I won't go into it, but that seemed to have reached a, and I think it's a very reasonable agreement between that firm and wastewater commission to avoid big, long, drawn-out losses. And they had some good points in their argument, we had good points in ours. I think, I think that's been, I think a good solution has been worked out there, and that's about it.
Mike?
Excuse me, I was just bringing this up. I can't remember if we spoke about the police commission since our October meeting, and I was just bringing up the agenda from that meeting to see what I could recall of, because nothing's bringing to mind. I think we did cover it, because it was the homeless.
It was on the last list.
The homeless discussion that got finally voted on, so. Okay. I have nothing beyond that this time.
Allen?
So my quick report, the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency Board, El Rapa Board, met at the end of October, and among the things we discussed was the request that was going to be made of the participating jurisdictions in terms of dues. And what we settled on is to ask everyone to maintain what they had done in, for FY14, so that process will go forward. And then Eugene City Attorney Glenn Klein came and made a presentation to the board as part of the in-kind work that we've, the city has provided to El Rapa as part of those dues, and gave the board, I think, a very thorough grounding in public meetings laws and record-keeping, excuse me, maintenance of, of public records, which was very helpful. So that was a good thing to see, that actual process in action of the in-kind contribution. And then just to preview, the police commission meets this Thursday, the 14th, at the police headquarters at 5:30, and I believe one of the things we're going to be reviewing is policies around racial profiling or anti-racial profiling. And the chief is put together a committee, outside of the police commission, a committee to help inform the creation of a new data collection system that they're implementing so they can collect data on stops, and we can see if there's any particular pattern that is of concern that needs to be remedied. So that will be part of the conversation at the police commission. And then on the 18th, Monday, the 18th, Human Services Commission will meet, which is our regular meeting time.
Thank you. Chris?
My report is on the Housing Policy Board. Actually, a lot of what governs housing right now is large question marks, both at the federal level and at the state level. A lot of that has to do with funding. A lot of the federal money, particularly through housing and urban development, is being cut back on, or is being reevaluated and reapplied. At the state level, as you know, the governor's doing a lot of consolidations, and that is occurring within human services as well. And so figuring out how that will translate down to the local level is one of the challenges we're working on right now. Some of the immediate impacts of the reductions in funding, both at the federal and state level, for example, HACSA now has a significantly larger waiting list for folks who are looking to get into housing. They provide support for folks to get into housing, and they are not able to provide a lot of that service. What happens then is that gulf I've talked about before, between getting from shelter into housing, becomes more challenging, becomes more difficult. So we're in the process of figuring out what the Housing Policy Board's role is in that kind of new environment. Another element that affects that is we really don't have any more sites. We, the last one we had, which was over near Willow Creek, was really not an adequate site, so we're going to sell that site, which leaves us now with no inventory to develop on. So we are now in the process of saying, what does housing, particularly around low-income housing, look like in this new age? What kind of housing can we support? Is it individual homes on individual lots? You know, what does it look like? So we want to still be active, we will still want to be able to provide low-income housing, but it may have to be in some new models, and that, that actually is a real opportunity. There may be some real exciting things we can do around that. And the last piece I was going to talk about, which was, we just learned at the meeting last week that federal money had been approved for the Bascom Village Development. I don't need to go into that, because Ed has done such a great job of reporting that entire story, but we just found that out last week, that that money has been approved at the, at the federal level. Well, where it goes from here, it's really in the hands of hearing officers and a lot of legal decision-making, so even we will not know where that goes until we find out from the hearings what, what happens there. So if those kinds of questions are opportunities.
Oh, the appeal, the hearings.
Yeah.
Sarah? We heard some last night about the sighting for the, and I know you sent us an update, but maybe just a couple sentences for the benefit of the public about where we are when we might see that first.
Sure. We're anticipating that the first rest stop will be set up by December 1st, or at least approved by December 1st. Michael's been having pretty regular conversations with two different groups that have come forward saying they're interested. One is, one has been more specific in the site that they want, and we'll just continue to work through that. We've been out to the site a couple of times, I think I said in the email. Michael pointed out, like, he was able, he intentionally went out on a day it had been raining, was able to access the site of the Toyota Prius, and so we have the pretty much 99% agreements that would need to be put into place, that we'll be kind of moving back and forth with them. So I think I would anticipate the first site would be ready to go by December 1st. We were aiming for Thanksgiving, we still may hit that, Derek.
I'm not going to want us to get into a conversation about this right now, but I did want to, and you weren't able to be at the meeting last night, and I just wanted to point out that we heard from Nightingale that they weren't interested and would not be working on the property that's at, that's my source, it's my way, so. I don't know where that leaves us, but just keep us updated on that.
Well, the intention was always to open one site and kind of see how it goes, and then open the second site and try to do them as quick as possible. So, you know, we have options for doing a short, random RFP call for interest, and I think there's been at least one person who's approached me. I'm not sure what group they're affiliated with that's also interested. So I think there'll be other people interested if they choose not to do that.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make the public aware. All right. So I think we're ready to head into our, do you have anything?
Oh, I was just going to remind everybody that this Thursday and Friday is the next Economic Prosperity Summit, and the first day, which is in Eugene, is at the Ford Alumni Center. It starts at 7:30. It's a great location, we have some great panelists. I think the day is going to be really inspirational, and it kind of meets some of those starting to think about what your best outcomes are around economic development. That might help seed the conversation for everybody, except for Mike.
Just want to encourage everybody to participate.
Yeah, it'll be great.
Okay.
On that.
Yes.
On the second day, the people that haven't signed up, I would recommend that you do sign up, because I received an email this morning that required me to print off a ticket to get in. It's, it's at no charge, they just needed, I guess, a head count of how many people, but they, the email says to bring in the ticket when you do come in. And that's on the second day at the Hilton Garden Inn in Springfield. So if you signed up for the second day, you might check your emails.
All right. Work session item is the ordinance on the plastic man.
We're going to give you an update on that, just invite Stephanie up to the table.
Good afternoon, Council. Thanks so much for having me here. I'm Stephanie Scaff, I'm the Zero Waste Analyst in Building and Permit Services, and the purpose of this work session is to just provide you with an update of the, the ordinance that encourages the use of reusable bags by banning single-use plastic bags. So we'll get started, the presentation's up here. In this presentation, I'm going to give a brief council history, followed by information regarding the Bring Your Bag Outreach and Education Initiative, and an update on ordinance implementation. There will be time at the end for some discussion. On October 22nd, 2012, council adopted the ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags, and on May 1st, the ordinance went into effect. On July 8th, there was discussion about the effect the five-cent paper bag charge has on the community, but it was decided to put this topic on hold and revisit it once the ordinance had been in place for six months, which brings us to now. And that brings us to our update of the original ordinance today. The Bring Your Bag Outreach Campaign and Initiative began in early March of 2013, the two months prior to the ordinance taking effect. We created a branded strategy to engage both retailers and the community about the new requirements, while maintaining an open line of communication to answer specific questions from the community and from retailers. So this is what our city website looks like. It's meant to be a one-stop shop for all retailers and community members to encourage everyone to bring their bag. This website gives an overview and a brief history of the policy, printable materials for the public and for retailers, and this includes frequently asked questions, signage and flyers for storefronts and checkout stands, as well as background information and resources for where to obtain free reusable bags. And here's just some examples of the sample signage we have available on the website. That's one of them. Here's another, just kind of a reminder for customers. Other outreach opportunities included, included an ad in the Earth Week edition of the Eugene Weekly that's shown up on top, and then also bus advertisements that ran for eight weeks through the May 1st start date. The county also ran a public service announcement during Earth Week to remind the community that the bag ban would be going into effect. We've relied heavily on local media sources to gain press coverage about the topic. There were print articles written about the new policy, as well as plenty of TV and radio We conducted two business information sessions to talk face-to-face with retailers about specific questions they had regarding the plastic bag ban. We spoke with 50 retailers in two days to address specific concerns. This was an effective way to connect with the business community and for them to be able to ask individual questions that pertain directly to their store. To gauge how the ordinance has gone to date, I'm going to describe the implementation activities that have taken place over the past six months. Implementation of the ordinance required no new programming. We're using existing code compliance programs within Building and Permit Services. To date, we've received 17 total business hardship exemption requests, and these have all been approved and allow the 17 businesses up to one year to kind of get up to speed with how, with the ordinance. And in terms of actual implementation, we've received one formal complaint from a community member, and as it turned out, the business was actually in compliance, and so the issue was resolved immediately. So the most important question we want answered in this work session is, does the ban on single-use plastic carryout bags encourage the use of reusable bags? Along with this, we were specifically tasked with finding out how both retailers and community members feel about the required five-cent fee for paper. We spent the past few weeks gathering data to help answer these questions from retailers and the community, and we used three primary tools to gather this information. The first is consumer intercept surveys. We gathered information from consumers as they left and entered different retail stores. The second is conversations with retailers, phone conversations. And the third piece of data was a solid waste customer satisfaction survey. And I'll go into each of these tools in greater detail and explain the results that we found. So for the customer intercept surveys, we gathered information from customers going in and out of eight retail businesses. We spent 45 minutes roughly gathering 15 to 20 short, four-question interviews from customers that were willing to talk to us, and we received a total of 173 responses. So to give you a sense of the, the locations, we have this map here that shows where we chose to complete the surveys. And we tried to get as broad of a spectrum as we could based on geographic location. This was slightly limited, because not every store we initially chose to participate wanted to participate. So this just gives you a sense of where we went. The first question we asked in this survey was, were you aware that the plastic bag ban, of the plastic bag ban before it went into effect? And 85% of the people said yes. This was not surprising to us because of the amount of media coverage we received during, before, during, and after the ban went into effect. When asked on their opinion of the ban, a combined 67% of people either agreed or were neutral in their opinion of the ban. 32% disagreed with it, and 1% were unsure. When asked if the ban prompts customers to bring their bags more often when they shop, 54% said yes, 35% said no, and 11% of people told us that they already brought their bags with them when they shop prior to the ordinance going into effect. When asked if the five-cent paper bag fee encourages people to bring their own bags to the store, 63% of people said yes, and 37% said no. So this concludes the findings we received through the intercept survey. The next round of information we received came directly from phone conversations with Eugene retailers. In an effort to speak with as many retailers as possible in a short amount of time, we conducted 151 retailer surveys. Each survey had 12 questions and took about 10 minutes to complete. We asked to speak with the manager or owner of each retail store. To give you an idea of who we reached, we spoke with over 30 clothing shops, about 20 grocery stores, 12 general or retail stores, in addition to convenience stores, home improvement shops, electronic stores, bakeries, and self-identified specialty shops. And we did not speak with restaurants, since they are generally exempt from the ban. The vast majority of retailers we spoke with had 25 or fewer employees. 10 stores had over 50 employees, and of those, two stated that they had over 200 employees. The first question we asked retailers was if they had concerns about the ban before it went into effect. We received a split vote on this, 50% said yes and 50% said no. And out of the 109 people that talked about their concerns, the top three concerns were customer reactions and complaints, having to charge the nickel for paper bags, and operational issues. 17 of the responses indicated that they had no concerns, and 10 respondents said they had already been using only paper and no plastic. When asked if they had experienced the concerns, 64% said that the concerns were just as they anticipated, 16% said that they were worse than they anticipated, and 20% said that the concerns were actually better than they anticipated. When asked about what shifts they've seen in customers' use of bags, 86% reported that people are carrying items out of the store without bags. 60% said that more people are bringing their own bags. 40% stated that more customers are buying paper bags for five cents, and 23% said that more people are buying reusable bags. Store owners were split 50/50 on the issue of charging five cents for paper bags. Half of the respondents believed the fee encourages people to bring their bags, half of the respondents do not believe the fee encourages people to. And when asked if they spend more or less or the same amount of money on bag orders since the ban was implemented, a combined 71% of retailers said that they spend either the same amount or less money on their bag orders. 16% spend more, and 13% didn't know. And in some of the anecdotal information we received, the reason store owners had spent less on bag orders was because they were purchasing fewer bags. We also wanted to know if our city's Bring Your Bag campaign had an impact on retailers the same way it did on the public. And when we asked if our outreach materials were helpful, 42% said that they were, 40% didn't realize that the campaign existed, and 18% said that the materials were not We asked retailers how they remind their customers to bring their bags when they shop, and for this question, retailers could respond to all of them if they, if that was the case. 88 retailers answered this question. 81% of the respondents have their cashiers remind customers to bring bags when they shop. 27% provide signage at the register. 24% have signage on store windows, and 6% have signs in the parking lot. And anecdotally, we also found out that 58 retailers that we surveyed do not remind customers at all. So these are the top themes for retailers, and the, the final question in the survey had asked, do you have anything else that you'd like to add? And so we were trying to figure out a way to kind of compile all of that into one general slide. And so these were the anecdotal responses we received, and I grouped them into categories ranked from highest frequency to lowest frequency. So this is just the amount that we heard. So this is just the amount that we heard of each one. The last piece of information we received was from a question we included on the residential solid waste customer satisfaction survey given every three years to Eugene households. This year, we included a question about the bag ban, and the question asked, since the city's ban on plastic bags took effect, how often do you purchase a bag when you go to the store? And the most prominent responses were about half of shoppers never purchase a bag, about one-third roughly purchase a bag 25% of the time or less, about only 2% of people purchase a bag all the time, and seniors, those with no children, and those with two in the household are likely to never purchase a bag. So again, we come back to the initial question, does the ban on single-use plastic carryout bags encourage the use of reusable bags? And the answer that we've concluded with is yes. From the staff perspective, we've realized that change is difficult. We've learned a lot in these six months since the ordinance took effect, and overall, we believe it's working. We've seen a decrease in the use of single-use plastic bags and an increase in the use of reusable bags. One unanticipated consequence has been that people carrying out their items from the store without a bag altogether. One can only assume it's because of the principle that people don't want to pay for a paper bag at checkout. Because of this, fewer paper bags are being used too. So from conversations we've had with retailers, many stores are working creatively to figure out solutions that work best for their customers. And this includes stores that provide free boxes to customers when they shop, which is a reuse activity, or putting a nickel in a jar for people who need to purchase a paper bag and don't happen to have a nickel with them. And so in terms of waste prevention, which was the original intention of the ordinance, we believe this is an effective mechanism for the community. Thank you. Thank you.
So I have two people in the queue, Mike and then George Poling.
Thank you. I appreciate this information too. There's some holes in it for me. But I have to say, as a single parent, I probably spend at least, at least a couple of nights a week at a grocery store. And I have, for months, asked every single time I go nearly, how the cashiers and the checkers are having to deal with this and what people's responses are like. And it is always the case that I hear the complaint that this is a horrible idea, we should never have done the five cent charge. That's 75% of the complaints they get, and that kind of runs along the lines of the constituents that I've heard from, and certainly my feelings on it from the beginning, that banning the plastic bag was fine and a decent idea, but the five cent charge for paper bags is nonsense and a very bad policy idea for our city. For me, the reason is that, it's very clear here, it says, you know, one of the questions that retailers were asked, in your opinion, does the five cent fee encourage people to bring their own bags to the store? And it was a 50/50 proposition at best. But what you didn't ask is, should we be charging the five cents? Should the city be forcing people to charge the five cents? And I challenge anybody at this table to tell me they think a majority of people would say yes. I don't think anybody believes that. And that's the problem for me, is that it's the very worst form of government. It's top-down. It's we-know-best, and we're going to teach you something or punish you if you don't. And I, if people believe that this idea is still a good one, I challenge you to put it on the ballot, let the people decide, because it's a horrible idea, and it's, it's not helping us and our credibility when we're trying to do other important work. I will have a motion in the second round, Mayor, but I want to hear what other councillors say to determine whether I would move to ask the manager to come back with a correction that removes the five cents, or to do so just for non-grocery-related stores. Thank you.
George?
Thank you. Could you go back to the map showing the customer intercept survey locations? Want everybody to look at that map, take a long look. I'm really disgusted that the northeast part of town is not covered. There's not one store in Mike's ward or my ward where customers were surveyed. Well, Fred Meyer. To me, that's
Get a real different response.
That's kind of carving out how you, who you talk to.
Yes.
I just, I don't understand that. And what is meant by operational issues? That was one of the other comments that was made by the retailers, I think, when asked. What does that operational issues mean?
They mostly were talking about storage issues for paper bags, changing up their, the operations in the back of the house to accommodate for different types of bags. And just, just so you know, we did call quite a few stores in those wards, but they didn't want us to come.
Interesting. And then the other thing is, on one of the slides, I'll try to find it here, trying to keep all my notes straight, where you're talking about the money spent by the retailers? Where did that go? I'm sorry, just kind of on the cost to retailers on the bag. The findings were
Page 13, George.
I'm getting there. There you go. The findings from retailers, do you spend more, less, or the same amount? You know, you say that, what was it, A, 71% spent less or the same amount? We can look at it another way. 44% spent more of the same amount. So again, it's the way it's presented makes it, you know. Surveys, you know, I don't like certain surveys, because you can take the information, you can take the questions, and you can take the answers and shape them how you want. I was contacted by a constituent the other day that took part in the phone survey, a reference to sustainability. And all the answers that were given directed this constituent to answer another question to make it look nice. So, you know, the information here, I'm, you know, it's nice to have, but it all depends on how you read it and how you look at it. But the other thing I object to is the use of the word "single-use" plastic bags. That's not what they are. I've got photographic proof. I use the plastic bags myself sometimes when I go into stores. And I too am constantly contacted by people that are absolutely fed up with the five cents. And it sounds silly, but they're willing to drive up and over the freeway to go buy groceries in Springfield because they can get the plastic bags that they use for various other reasons. So I'm willing to listen to what Mike's got, the motion that Mike's got coming up.
Mayor, can I just say something real quick? And I understand the concern and the heatedness of the conversation among the many in the community. I just want to make it also abundantly clear, as staff does this work, they put their best professional effort into the work. And while I understand it may feel like the survey is swayed one way or another, I just want to reassure you that that isn't their intent, never has been their intent, and won't be their intent. And so the council, you'll choose the policy that you choose to do, and we will support that 100%. I just want to ensure you that the intent of staff is good as we go through these kinds of things, so.
Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things I want to ask, and just kind of get away from this part of the conversation is, one, I've noticed going into Winco that they have a five-cent bag credit when you bring your bag in. Do you have any idea of how people are responding to that, how that's working, and if there are other grocers who are looking to do something similar?
We, anecdotally, just hearing from some retailers personally, I know that there are stores who, when you bring your bags, they'll give you a credit on a five cents or however, however much you can choose. And while that's not part of the ordinance, it seems like it works really well for the community, just because people enjoy to get incentives and be incentivized by something.
Is there a way that we can create that kind of incentive for other retailers to, you know, if you bring the bag in and you're reusing a bag, that you do get a nickel credit or a penny or whatever?
I can research it. I haven't, I haven't heard about anyone making that part of the rule, but I can look into it.
I think that that would be something that I would like to see us really look into, is that's a more proactive approach than a punitive approach to it. And the second question I have is about the non-grocery bag charges, particularly the fact that there's no ceiling on those. You know, when you walk into a store, a store like Toys R Us, and all of a sudden they're charging you 25 or 30 cents for a bag, it's, it's almost, you know, extra sticker shock. It's not the amount of money, it's just kind of the idea, because I have it riveted in my head, five cents. But if you go to, you know, Penny's or somewhere else and they charge you seven cents for a bag for a tie, I think that's a little bit over the top. Is there any way that we can modify the ordinance to create a ceiling on that? If not, to do something as, as Counselor Clark has suggested in restricting this to
I think, I mean, you can modify the ordinance to put a ceiling, put a low-end, high-end, whatever the council chooses to do. I know, anecdotally, some of the retailers have, as they said in this slide and as they said on the phone, they have had some increased costs. And so I think it's just a matter of figuring out what that right number is. Are we finished, Greg? Claire, and then Alan, and then George.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I do want to note that on the last page, on page 18, there was a couple of slides that seemed to not get included in the main presentation, which is about how often do you receive complaints? 12 respondents said multiple times a day, 33 said daily, and then there's a mix, and then 46 said never. And then findings from retailer have the number of complaints increased or decreased since the May 1st implementation. 21% said that complaints have increased, and 79% of those who responded said they've decreased. So that's from the retailers. So also thinking about the customer surveys, and maybe you did try to survey, I thought the mix of grocery stores in terms of the types of grocery stores that you surveyed was good, but it would have been, I think, also valuable to survey at the Toys R Us or Pet Smarts or Jerry's or some non-grocery outlets. I don't know if you tried that and they didn't want that survey happening there, or if
We primarily just stuck with groceries, just because that's who it was, it seemed to be the most prominent store type.
So, you know, I don't know if that would have made a huge difference in terms of the results, but that was just one thing that struck me. In terms of how retailers are addressing this, I heard, anecdotally, that Sundance has a fund and they're donating the five cent bag fee. I think customers can even vote on where they'd like that donation to go, to local nonprofits. So there are retailers who are taking creative approach to how they view that. Can you remind us how many other cities around the country have implemented a fee and what those fees tend to be? A mandatory fee?
I couldn't tell you the number, the exact number around the country, but the last time I checked was around the implementation of the ordinance, and it was about 83.
83?
Yeah. And the highest I've seen is 10 cents per paper bag, but it could, it could be, there could be communities where it's more than that, and so I could, I could find out.
No, that's all right. Yeah, I have family down in the LA area, and I know so the city of Los Angeles, which is millions of people, they have a 10-cent mandatory bag fee. Not a bastion of government socialism, as far as I know, so, you know, I don't think it's crazy for the city of Eugene to have a mandatory fee as well. I would have some concerns about capping the fee, because to me, that seems on the other end of things, to interfere with what the store can charge for the things that they are giving out to customers. So that would be something I'm not sure I would support. I'd have to think about that some more. Thanks.
Alan?
So this is pretty much working as, as I expected it to work, and as we thought it was going to work when we put it into place. It's reducing trash, it's increasing the use of renewable bags, and it is decreasing the number of paper bags that are being used. So all those things combined is what we were trying to accomplish, and pretty much, we've accomplished it. I'm kind of amazed at the comments around the table, that if you don't like the message, you attack the messenger. I actually appreciate the work that the, the unbiased and professional work that the staff's done on this, on this update. So while change is difficult, I think we've seen, I've seen pretty much a dramatic drop-off in the number of complaints about this. Even the survey where retailers said that almost 80, 80% saw a decrease, a four-to-one ratio of retailers saw a decrease. So it's become, coming part of the fabric of what we do and the way we do things here. And my own survey, anecdotal as it might be, at Market Choice where I shop, they pretty much don't hear anything about anymore. And for those people that have a problem with it, they actually have a five-cent jar where they just pull five cents out if someone has a bag that they need to buy that they can't afford or whatnot. And I actually can, will contribute to that fund, that little jar. At Penny's the other day when I was in there, they said they really weren't getting much complaints, just out-of-towners that were not familiar with it. And said, most people just carry out the one or two things. I carried the two things out that I purchased. One of them was actually already in a bag, so it didn't need a bag. So I didn't feel the need to purchase a bag. So from where, from what I've heard and people coming up to me, pretty much overwhelmingly public support for it. And again, we're not alone in doing this. 83-plus cities, the entire state of Hawaii has banned plastic bags. All of Los Angeles County, the city of Los Angeles and the county are, have done, that's several million people. This is a growing trend. This is happening more and more. When we first started looking at this, the number of cities was like 40, and now it's doubled in just about a year. So it's something that's, you may not, it's something that's happening all over the country. So I think it's working as planned, and I'm satisfied with it, and I don't see that they need to change much.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I really don't see any reason to fiddle with this ordinance anymore. I mean, if we get involved in discussions about, well gee, should it be five cents or seven cents or 10 cents? I mean, I think, I think a nickel's fine. I just, you know, the complaints have gone way down. And I personally, my business, it almost never happens, and other stores I go into, I do ask the checkers, and people stop and go, so what's up with the bags? Are people like, you know, storming the barricades, angry, you know? And they say, no. Yes, there are some complaints, but most people have, seem to have adapted to it. And so I really, you know, in reading the results of the surveys, I just don't see any reason to change it. There's nothing in here that jumps out at me of like, oh gosh, there's this, this overriding concern of, you know, I just don't see it. I see public acceptance and support, by and large. Yes, there are people that don't like it, but, you know, that's pretty much going to happen with anything that we do. But most people seem to like it or have accepted it. And so I really think, well, let's leave it alone and let it go another year, and really not spend too much time on it anymore, personally. Thank you.
Chris?
It really, it seems that there's two issues that we're really talking about. The first issue is the ban, the ban on plastic bags itself. My sense is that really is not an issue at this point. I don't sense that anybody, or that there are sufficient, there is sufficient support to end that. So I believe the plastic bag ban is in place, will stay in place, and is, is a good thing. The second issue, though, is the one that revolves around, should we be charging money for the paper bags? That's, that's a separate issue. And I think the survey is very helpful for me, but there are at least two fundamental questions that I still revolve around. The first one is why we put the five cent fee in the first place. And the first one, the first reason was to encourage people to bring a reusable bag, because if you just trade one kind of bag for another kind of bag. So the question out of that is, have we reached the point where if, whether there was not a five cent fee, would that, would the behavior suddenly, everybody would start wanting bags? I don't have the answer to that. We don't have the answer to that. It was not one of the questions we found out. It may be that after a certain amount of time, you don't need the five cents anymore because you, you have changed the behavior you wanted to change. Which leads to the second reason, which was one that was encouraged by the Grocers Association, which was which was, paper bags are more expensive. If you put this ban in effect and we don't have a way to recover money, it's going to hurt us financially. I also don't have an answer to that question. I do not know if that is indeed the case. I know they're kind of getting at it a little bit here, but I don't have a solid answer that if we were to take away the five cent fee, one, would behavior suddenly do a 180? I have a sense it probably wouldn't. Once people develop habits, they tend to stick with them. And two, would it create a financial burden on grocers? Which I don't want to create a financial burden, and I, and I don't have the answer to either one of those questions. They are intriguing in that it's, it's, what this has boiled down to is people are not as much angry about the bag ban. I think they understand it. They're, they're inconvenienced by it and it's a pain for them, but they understand it. I think really what we're confronting now is people who have gotten exercised over the idea of being charged money for the alternative. And if we don't have to charge the money for either one of those two reasons, it's at least worth looking at whether we still need to continue that. Because we could, we could make a whole lot of people happier if we didn't have to do it, but I don't know. That, that's why those two questions for me are pivotal, because I don't have the answer to those two. And I can't make a thoughtful or deliberate decision about that until I know those two questions. So that's why it's really an open end for me.
So I would just like to, let's see, we're, we're heading into, needing to get into the next work session at 12:50, which is right now, so we need to wrap this up as fast as we can. And my only comment would be that I think that a lot of people don't, aren't clear about why we think it's important to not, to charge for paper bags. And they're not clear about the issues around the paper bags. So I just think there's a, there's a missing education piece here that we need to probably do a little bit more work on. So Mike, you're next, and then we're going to try to wrap this up.
I am not going to make a motion today because counting those is around the table. I know it won't pass. But I will say, just the same, certainly, I'd like to reassure my friend Alan with his comment that he was surprised here. Either you should probably listen more carefully, or maybe you just didn't understand. No one at this table attacked the messenger, sir. My comments were around the idea that this was a bad policy that we have decided to implement, that it's unwise, and that it has massive amounts of derision in the community. Now, I, one of the reasons I like to participate on council is because the majority of us, on a fairly regular basis, value to a large degree, public participation in the things that we do. We want to hear from the public. We do public forums, we do, we take an immense amount of care to get great public input on our decisions. This is one where that's simply not the case. This is one where this council has said, we know best and we're going to teach you, and it's wrong. If you put this to a vote, it would fail massively. And I, I just think it's very bad policy. When you look at this particular last page that was brought up, and some people, to some degree, that are, were the retailers who were asked for their responses, are still getting complaints months later, 84 are still getting complaints, 55 are not, and as George pointed out, that's outside of wards four and five. If you added wards four and five to that, the still getting complaints to not would be more like four or five to one. This is massively unpopular, it's a bad decision. And my point, and the reason I'm exercised about it, is because it affects other things that we do, when we're willing to do something this unwise in the way of policy that somehow we know best.
Can I just jump in real there? It was the customer intercept surveys where we contacted grocery stores, and some grocery stores did not want to have people, either they didn't want somebody there surveying, or their manager wasn't there and they couldn't answer it. The phone surveys went to, to residences, or I'm sorry, retailers around the, every ward. So the phone surveys were citywide, and it was just where we were invited to be that we did the customer intercepts. And it was never intended to leave out any ward, it was intended to get as broad a spectrum as we could, so.
Okay, we're gonna, Greg, I, I saw your hand up. We're, we're five minutes into the next type that we need, the next...
This'll take less than 20 seconds. Thanks, Mayor. I, I want to go back to, to the issue of what WENCO has done with the, the credit. Is there a way that we, as a city, can encourage bag credits with our grocers and, and those types of retailers? If, if it's working for them, I don't see why it shouldn't be able to work for other people. And that would be an effective balance in addressing some of the concerns I think that, that Chris has, has brought up in his, in his conversation.
I can, I can get back and find out about that, if anyone else has done it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda today, which is the Protected Class Definition Code Amendment.
Hi, Mayor, councilors. Thanks for giving us time today. I'm Michael Kennison, manager of the Equity and Human Rights Office and the Neighborhood Services Programs. Here today to talk to you about amending or updating the city's section of the code 4.615 that relates to human rights, specifically to consider updating the definition of sexual orientation in the code, so that it's consistent with the state-level definitions of sexual orientation. We're here, this was initiated by a community member that came to the Human Rights Commission and noted that there was a discrepancy between state-level and, and our local code definitions. And at the request of the Human Rights Commission, our council liaison, Councilor Evans, then requested a, a work session to bring that to you, and, and we're here today. What I would like to do, just briefly, is, is give you a little bit of background about how the council has dealt with the issue of, of gender identity in the past, and, and then a little bit about what this would mean for the city. And then eventually, what we're recommending is that council schedule a public hearing on the issue. So the, the issue of gender identity was a topic brought before the council in, I think, around 2002 initially. The Human Rights Commission had, this is a work plan item, and they did a lot of research and a lot of work on coming up with proposed language to amend the code that would afford a protected class status for, that would include gender identity, much as other, we have other protected classes in, in the code as it relates to discrimination around housing, employment, and public accommodations. And those things you could probably name, but relate to race, marital status, et cetera, et cetera. That, there was some controversy around that issue, and eventually, when it came before council, it was removed from the number, there were a number of proposed amendments to the code at that time. So that one was removed by council and it did not pass. The Human Rights Commission then spent a couple of years developing, focusing on public outreach and education around gender identity and, and issues facing transgendered persons in our community, held lots of community meetings, and eventually began researching and drafting new language to come back to council. This is around 2006 by, by then. At the same time, there was an effort at the state level to also consider protections related to gender identity. And eventually, the Organ Equality Act was passed in 2007. And so it added sexual orientation to those lists of characteristics that are protected from discrimination in a number of different statutes. And so the issue never really came back to council because the state kind of preempted that and acted, and so their definition of sexual orientation now includes gender identity. But what didn't happen is we never went back to our code and revised our code so that it was consistent with the state law definitions. And so that's what was, what is actually being proposed today. So this change would simply align language in the Eugene Code with existing protected class definitions in state law. Enforcement for an investigation for discriminated, discrimination-related complaints regarding housing, employment, and public accommodation are already provided by state-level agencies, which utilized the state-level definition for sexual orientation. This would not afford any additional legal protections related to gender identity, nor would it impose additional requirements for city operations beyond those currently required by state law. So that's, that's kind of the background and why we're here. And so the rest of the time, I'm open to answering whatever questions that we, that we can.
I would just like to start out by, to me, this seems like a no-brainer, that we're just getting into compliance with state law. But the thing that's really important to me about this is a statement of our community and how our community feels about things. So it has, it sends a message, and we're still on a regular basis in seeing violence occur against people because of gender and identification. So I think it's an, it embodies a great deal of importance in the message we give as our expectation of our community and our desires of who we are as a community. So I think this is an important thing to be done. And Greg, you are on the committee, you want to say, and then I'm going to call you, George.
Mayor, I think that, that this is, you know, more or less a, a housekeeping issue. It's cleaning up the language in our code to expand it to meet the level of the state's statute, and I think that this is just pretty much, in my opinion, slam dunk.
Yep. I've got George Pollan, Claire, Alan, and Mike. George?
Yeah, basically, I'm going to say the same thing. You know, whether you agree or disagree with it, it's state law. And numerous times over the past years I've been on the, the council, we've changed local ordinances to come in compliance with the same wording as the state laws. So, you know, I, I see no reason why this shouldn't go to a public hearing, and I see no reason why it shouldn't be enacted. And I don't know, do you need a motion to, to the public hearing? Or just based on the conversation around the table, if you get a feeling that, yeah, we...
I think the conversation around the table suffices.
So Claire?
Yeah, I'm glad that we're looking to make this change. I, you know, part of me feels like a, a motion and an affirmation by the council might be in order. I, you know, wasn't politically active back in 2002 when the, then council was discussing that issue then, but I remember the coverage in the paper and, you know, friends and, and such reacting to that. And it was a very hurtful, challenging time for people in this community. And so to have us come to this place where we can bring this forward and have a council that says, eh, this is a no-brainer, we don't, we even need to worry about this now, I think is huge in terms of where we've come as a community. But I would almost recommend that we do put a motion out and, and vote. So I don't know if that's appropriate now, or if we should wait for...
Go ahead.
Okay. So I would move that the council adopt the state language for the Protected Class Definition for Sexual Orientation to be updated, to update the Eugene City Code.
Second.
Moved in second, yes.
Mayor and council, at this point, because you're talking about amending an ordinance, which you do by ordinance, you'll need to hold a public hearing. So at this point, I think the motion is just to schedule the public hearing.
So I'll amend my motion to schedule the public hearing to...
The second approved.
To amend the city code EC 4.615, to be consistent with state law definitions.
That's what I heard.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate.
Are we still going to have some discussion, perhaps?
Oh, of this? Yes, sure. I mean, I was going to have you talk more, sorry. I was, sorry.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Go ahead. Alan and Mike.
Might be next.
Yeah, I, I, the exact same words as the mayor was going to say, I think this is a no-brainer. Not only has it put us in compliance with existing state law, it's really a housekeeping thing. I was not in favor of what the council did back then, and still not. And beyond just doing the housekeeping and being compliant, I think for our community we should do this. And clearly, we need to protect people with respect to gender identity as well as sexual orientation, which we already do. We're not only seeing discrimination, but we're seeing violence, and that needs to stop. And this is one way of many things that we need to do in order to get that to occur.
And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your statement and your comments around us making statements about the kind of community we want. And I agree with you, that's what I, that's a form of what I was trying to say in the last discussion. As a more conservative person than some at the table, this is one of those issues that a lot of people who see the world similarly to the way I do sometimes have issues around. And I used to once, too. But I just wanted to say, I'm happy to support this, and I wanted to say why, because maybe somebody who looks at this stuff differently than I do now might have a, a different perspective on it if they heard me say it. I always had a, a kind of a negative response to protecting special classes of people that seemed oddly unfair to me. And while, while the mayor's point that this makes a statement about the kind of community we want to be, I think that the point of government is to protect people's rights. That's the point of it. Now, in order to say it's right to protect people in special classes around issues of discrimination and hate laws and violations of hate laws, you have to be okay with that special, special classification of people who are victims of a loss of rights. Some call that special rights, I don't. And I was really fortunate to sit one time with Gordon Smith and have him explain his point of view on it, because he came around on it. And the more he talked about it, the more I got it and I understood it. Because for me, it was, well, what's, you know, you can't legislate what somebody believes in their heart and what they think in their head, you know? But you should treat everybody equally, and their actions should be treated equally well. But that's nonsense, because intent has everything to do with crimes. And we treat different crimes differently all the time, based on intent. There's a difference between manslaughter and homicide, and it has very much to do with what were you trying to do or not. So for me, I don't have any problem at all with the idea of the protections around classes that deal with discriminatory issues, because it has everything to do with people's intent, and that's okay. And we should, and our job is to protect people's rights.
Okay, I have no one else in the queue. So, Alan, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you for bringing that, and with that, I think we're, yes...
May I make, well, just a quick announcement, Mayor? So next week is Gender Diversity Awareness Week, and on Friday, there's an event at the atrium on Transgender Day of Remembrance. I think, Mayor Pierce, you may be reading a proclamation there. I think that starts around six o'clock, and so Mayor and Councilor are invited to, to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Human Rights Commission's board. Please, thank you. All right.